Welcome, everyone. This is electronically held special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council virtual meeting on June 28, 2021. Clerk, can you call the meeting? I'm sorry, let me call the meeting to order, apologize. A special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council was called to order at 5:03 PM by Council Pro Tem Dave Abdallah. And Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Absolutely, council members. Just a reminder to state your current location, your city and your state. Dave Abdallah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Zuhair Abdalhaq.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Moby Dune.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell is absent. We have Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Okay, Council Chair Pro Tem, you have a quorum.
Okay, great. So, Councilman Tom Wenzel, if you could do us a favor and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, right in front of that beautiful flag flying behind it.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands.
One nation.
God. Divisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm glad we're not a choir. Okay. Next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Or Mr. Chair.
Councilman Robert Coniston, go ahead.
I move that the Order of Business for the June 28, 2021, electronically held special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council be approved.
Approved.
Okay, motion made by Robert Coniston and supported, who was, who did the supporting?
Support.
Okay, Councilman Moby Dune. All right, next item on the agenda is we have a public hearing and comments on it, agenda items only.
Council Chair Pro Tem, we have to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And ask if there's any discussion.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
All right.
Let's go ahead and vote on the agenda. On favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next item on the agenda, this is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. This is for the residents to comment on issues or anything they want to comment on in regards to the agenda, and they will have two minutes per resident. Madam Clerk, anybody on there that has any questions?
Yes, we have Vince Dambrowski.
Go ahead.
George, you have him. And I'll start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair Pro Tem, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Miyaki. What I want to make a statement on is a concern made earlier on a statement made on social media that just one individual of the council was attempting or attempted to contact GFL regarding pricing of this special pickup for Saturday. What concerns me?
I'm sorry, this wouldn't be a council item, that would be at the end.
Well, this is about the agenda, right?
The agenda item, comments on agenda items. So, we only have the two items on the agenda, so you can comment on either one of those.
So, Vince?
You're welcome to comment at the end, you'll get an extra minute.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Clerk. Anybody else have any questions? I see Suzanne Todd on there. Suzanne, go ahead. Can you unmute her, or maybe she got unmuted herself?
Oh, there we go. Hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to comment on agenda. Item 8A, Water Distribution Operations Services Contract. I know you can't answer questions now, but when you go to vote on this, could you please give the residents address these questions? Didn't the previous administration have a company already doing this? Is this new company in addition to that company? Or is it replacing that company? And doesn't Wade Trim do, hasn't Wade Trim done this in the past? And that's it? If you could answer those when you go, just before you go to vote, I'd appreciate it. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. And thank you for everything you do. Anybody else? I'm looking at participants, I don't see any other names, do you see any other names, Madam Clerk? Nobody else? Okay.
Not at this time.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is reports from the mayor. We have, yes, go ahead.
We have the approval of the minutes you haven't done.
There are no minutes that I see in the.
From the.
We don't do that in, we don't do that in a special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
It's just in regular.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, no, it's all right. So, next item on the agenda is reports from mayor. We have 8A, which is Water Distribution Operations Services Contract. And this was brought forward by one of our directors, Al Adib, and the mayor.
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the mayor to sign the Water Distribution Operations Service Contract with Hennessy Engineers Incorporated in amount of $1,600 per month. It is a requirement of the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act, Act 399, to have water supply operator in charge as outlined in 8A.
Support.
More. All right, motion on 8A made by Councilman Ray Muscat and seconded by Councilman Robert Coniston. Any discussions on that?
Council Chair.
We have Zuhair Abdalhaq, I'm sorry, Zuhair Abdalhaq has his hand raised.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman, Zuhair Abdalhaq.
Thank you, thank you very much. I believe we need to have representative who can sign and talk to Eagle, which is basically responsible for approving the project for the CSO and other issues related to, you know, our sewage and drainage. And at this time, we do not have anybody who can contact them and authorize to sign. And that's the reason we have to have this company authorized to do so because Mr. Salmy left without having anybody to replace him as cosignee for, with that company. So, I recommend that we approve this by just for six months. And this gives the administration enough time to bid it out and to pick the right people because it's over $1,500.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ray Muscat.
Yeah, I wasn't, I don't take shorthand, Council Chair, thank you. When Suzanne Todd was asking those questions.
I wrote them, I wrote them.
If we could have those questions answered, I would like that. Plus, I do support Zuhair Abdalhaq, Councilman Abdalhaq, about the six months for this. We can, we can, or I could live with something like that, too.
Sure, so just to repeat the questions, and Suzanne Todd must have copied off of my notes, so she took the first question from me, but I let her go this time, I'm not going to turn her in. So, so the first question I had, and if you don't mind, Mr. Deep, if you could answer that for us, if you don't mind, Mr. Al Adib. The first question she had was, was there one already? And that's the same question that I had, was there one already? What in general is that used for? And, you know, and why are we going to another one, and why are we bringing this forward right now? Additional questions Suzanne Todd had on there is, is this in addition to the one we have now? Or does this replace somebody we have now? And the last question that Suzanne Todd had is, Wade Trim, did they do this in the past? Or is this something that's completely new? So, Mr. Al Adib, if you don't mind, if you can go ahead and I'll have Councilman Moby, Councilman Bob Coniston, and Gary Miyaki to speak in regards to this. Go ahead, Al.
Okay, so I didn't take shorthand either, but the question number one, it was done in-house. So, no, we did not have a company doing it in the past. And no, this is not in addition to what Wade Trim does. And two, it was.
Or anybody else.
Or anybody else. Anybody else, no, there is no existing contract. This is all because we had it done in-house in the past, the gentleman retired, and now we're, we're obtaining that service. Two, I've asked multiple, three companies actually, to get prices after Mr. Salmy retired. And Wade Trim never replied. Another independent replied at $3,000 a month, and Hennessy replied with $1,600 a month. So, no, it's not in addition to any existing contract that we currently have.
So, you mentioned, Mr. Deep, that somebody retired, referencing.
A company, a tailor. Tailor operator retired recently, and he's doing that as a consultant now. And then, and he's on vacation, he said he will send me written, but verbally, he said he will charge $3,000 a month.
Okay, but he's the one who used to do it for our city in-house?
No, no, he used to do it for Taylor. He retired from Taylor, but now he's doing it as an independent consultant.
No, no, no.
So, I was trying to get three prices.
Yeah, you mentioned that we used to do this in-house, and I'm trying to figure out, who did it?
Mr. John Salmy.
John Salmy.
Was the operator until he retired.
So, it sounds to me like this is something that we're going to need somebody on a somewhat temporary basis, and I kind of agree with Councilman Zuhair Abdalhaq, until we get a new director in, is that correct?
Well, and get someone in-house, yes, yes.
Okay. Was there anything else as far as explanation that you had, Mr. Deep?
No, the only additional services is, only additional services that we're trying to obtain now is to have the individual doing it as part of the engineering group. Because in the past, we had issues with the testing. So, I didn't want to just do minor compliance, you know, just to do the basic compliance to the state of Michigan. You know, as we all know, codes are minimum standards. So, when you say you meet code, you're just meeting minimum standards. I was hoping, as a city, we want to go beyond minimum standard. So, things like the stuff that happened in the past, when we received reports, like pumpage reports, and showed deficiency in certain areas, when we had, I'm looking at exceedances back from 2019 and 2020 on our lead and copper testing. I wanted to have an individual on staff, an engineer, someone technical enough to take that information and actually do something with it. You know, take the pumpage report and identify deficiencies, and then put a project in place to address them. Not just to basically meet, you know, oh, I did my testing, I'm all set. That's, that's where we're headed with this. So, I'm looking for a qualified person, a technically qualified, an engineer to do that.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a quick question, Deep. So, if you take this at $1,600, if you multiply it over a year, you're talking about roughly around, I don't know, $18,000, some change.
Okay.
Is it, what advantage do we have, if I'm a resident, what advantage is there to me as a resident to have this $18,000 paid? What's the advantage of me paying this, or you, or us as a city paying this company versus somebody in-house doing it, another director like we had in the past?
Well, if you have, if you have someone fully qualified and technically qualified to do that, not just base, take, take the tests and file the reports to the state. As I indicated, I want them to be able to do something with that information. I wanted to put that information to use. So, we, yes, we will do the required testing. But I wanted to also have that information available for us to develop a program to address whatever deficiencies we have. You know, put corrective action plan, put a capital project in place to address deficiencies, that kind of stuff. So, this is why I was looking for someone who's technically qualified, not just a water operator, but a technically qualified individual that he or she can assist us. Now, if that person turns out to be someone in-house that is fully qualified, I'm okay with that. But until we, we get someone to that level, we wanted to go beyond minimum. You know, we just wanted to be able to, to say that we are, and there will be value to this because we can, you know, increase development, attract, you know, I wanted to do something with that information. And apply it, use it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Deep. Madam Clerk, who was the next council person, or if it was Gary Miyaki, whoever's next, please?
That would be the Corporation Council. I will ask him to unmute. And I will lower his hand.
Very good, thank you. Very briefly, I wasn't sure if I heard the entire motion, was it a motion both to approve and authorize signatures, or just to authorize signatures?
Just to authorize.
Okay, it should be to approve the agreement and authorize signatures.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably have a motion to redo this in a minute, so.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest.
Thank you.
The second part of this is, the agreement indicates at paragraph eight that the owner shall have the right to terminate this agreement for the owner's convenience on written notice to engineer. An engineer shall terminate performance of services on a schedule acceptable to owner. So, you may not need to necessarily put in for up to a period of, say, six months, based on the idea that if we gave them, say, for example, 30 days written notice, we may be able to essentially terminate notice, or terminate the contract or agreement without needing to have a specific firm date, we can do it still at our convenience. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, just so you know that signing the contract was authorized in the motion by mayor, for Mayor Bossy to sign it.
Right, right, authorizing, however, is not the same as approving, it should be both approved and authorized.
It says to authorize the mayor to sign, is that good?
Okay, all right.
That's what the motion was.
Okay, yeah, it should have approved, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so next person up, I know we have Robert Coniston.
It's Robert Coniston, I will, oh.
Thank you, Chairman. Hennessy Engineering is a good company, they're located down river. I know the former mayor had talked to him on occasion. One of the reasons we set up the Watershed Stewards Commission years ago, Kurt Peisy and I, was there's a lot of requirements by the county and with the state of Michigan to report certain things regarding our sewage and regarding any drinking water. So, I think this is a good idea, and I think we should approve it for six months or whenever we can go out to bid to see who else is available, whichever is later, and you know, see who else can do it. I know Wade Trim, I don't think they have anyone there now, Nick Lamaco, who was an engineer, did some of this kind of work, but he's retired.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Next person up, Lynn?
We have Councilman, but they don't.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Hey, thank you so much, Council Chair, and I just wanted to ask a couple of things, maybe to the mayor or to our Director Deep. Do you believe that six months is enough time? I mean, to me, and I know, I know that we want to be fiscally responsible, but this is a real serious matter, and I actually love that this was put on today's special meeting. I don't think we should limit ourselves to six months where we, you know, and over a year, and I know $18,000 seems like a lot of money, but, you know, if it's potentially saving somebody else's life, or to be able to fill in that vacancy like we used to have when John Salmy was here, I don't think we should put ourselves at six months. I think corporate council said we can just give a 30-day notice. And I would just like to hear what, from the mayor or, or Director Deep, if what they think is best.
Director Deep, go ahead.
Yeah, so the next available exam for the S1, if we are to ask our new director to take that exam, is within six months. So, I, you know, it's gotten a bit short. As Mr. Miyaki indicated, we do have the options to terminate before a year, so I'm, I'm open for a year contract and.
Would that be best for you?
Yes, sir.
Then I think I'd love for this honorable council to just consider that.
Yep.
Now, you have the rest of my time, Council Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And it does say, I did read the clause on there, number eight, it does say.
Yeah, I read it as well.
It already said, we can cancel it anytime, doesn't stipulate even, it doesn't even stipulate 30-day notice. Okay, thank you, Councilman Moby Dune. Next Councilman, is that correct, or is it Michael Blackburn?
We have Michael Blackburn.
Michael Blackburn.
Michael, Michael, go ahead.
Michael Blackburn, I will ask him to tell you.
This is for, this is for council only, this discussion.
Oh, you're absolutely right.
This is for council discussion.
Yeah. Well, yeah. It's on the council.
It is on the council, but at the same time, Councilman Ray Muscat, I can tell you, my expertise for myself personally, I have no problem with somebody like Michael Blackburn, who's in DPW, giving us his input on this.
And that's, that's fine.
He's, he's kind of, he's one of the.
That's fine.
authorities there, so if you don't mind, yes, please, Mr. Blackburn.
And I think that's what has been done, you know, to get your expertise.
It's good, it's good to hear him.
To make a decision, a better decision.
Say, Council, I apologize for not looking at the agenda ahead of time, I will make this quick. There is one person down at the DPW that does have their S1 license, just so that you are aware of that.
Okay.
Explain what that means, please.
The, the S1 license is required by Eagle, I think was all in that, the document, somebody within the city has to have their S1 water license. And there is one person down at DPW that does have their S1 water license at this time.
Okay, so.
Put it, that, that will fulfill what you are, what you are looking for.
So, you have to say the name at this particular point, so, Mr. Deep, with that particular piece of information, I'm just wondering, do you think it'd be better for us to maybe table this thing for right now? Until you've had that, can you look into it?
No, I, I, no, I'm already aware of that.
You are already aware of the person?
Yes, sir, I am. It's Mr. Blackburn, yes.
Oh, it's himself, okay. All right, but you still prefer to go in the direction of this particular direction?
We're, we're looking for a, for an engineer, a person with a technical knowledge to take us to, to not just do compliance. I'm sitting on a stack of exceedances from prior years that we haven't done much about. I need to develop a program with a new director now to address these things, so we're not looking at exceedances and violations.
I see.
That's my, that's my preference, sir.
Okay, thank you, Director. Next person up is Councilman Zuhair Abdalhaq.
Mr. Deep, my, okay, when is the deadline for us to submit this name to Eagle?
I need, I need to have a person on staff by Thursday.
Okay, so it's, I believe it's July 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I really, again, I recommend, and I don't know if Ray made the motion or not.
Yes, we did.
I, I think if Mr. Miyaki wants to add something, I recommend that we go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, Mr. Miyaki is in the portal, and he's waiting to speak, so, were you all set, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Gary Miyaki, go ahead.
Yes, given what's been stated up to this point, I guess what I would recommend is that the motion be a motion to approve the agreement and to authorize signatures from the mayor and the clerk, with the understanding that the agreement will be approved for a period not to exceed one year, but with the understanding that it may be terminated per paragraph eight before then.
Don't move.
Support, support, good idea.
So moved.
Okay. So, Gary, is, is that enough as far as what you just said? And then, Councilman Ray Muscat saying, so moved, and his original motion combined, is that enough to move this thing forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on this, and this is a motion by Councilman Ray Muscat, seconded by, who was it seconded by? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Coniston.
Councilman Coniston.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item 8B.
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approved payments in the amount of $1,681,467 from account 101-200-722.000, and any amount of $570,000 from account 101-200-722.002 to the Police and Fire Pension System Act 345 as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Moby Dune. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
Councilman Zuhair Abdalhaq, go ahead.
I have a question, whoever would like to answer the question. Is this money collected from the year 2020 to 2021?
Okay, who would you like to answer that?
Anybody who can answer it, from the treasurer, to anybody from the pension board, to the mayor, anyone who can answer.
See, the treasurer got her hand raised.
Yeah, and I will go ahead and I will ask her to unmute. Georgie, I know already he has her.
Thank you, council members. I do want to answer that question. So, that amount was currently collected in the current fiscal year that we're in right now. So, starting with the summer taxes from 2020, running through this current year, which is why it's very important that these taxes that was collected under Act 345 millage be paid to the Act 345 Pension Board by June 30th. By, so it has to be in the same fiscal year as it was collected. Otherwise, there are several consequences, which I believe I sent to council members just to be aware, including Plant Moran would have to report that we did a partial payment or didn't do a payment.
Madam Treasurer, I understand the consequences very, very well. My question is, is it for the previous fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, 2021?
That is our current fiscal year, not previous. We are currently in that fiscal year until June 30th. So, it is collected for this current fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, which is why the payment must be made by June 30th.
So, basically, we collect the money and we pay it at the end of the fiscal year.
That is correct, yes. That is correct, that is how City of Dearborn Heights has been doing it. There are other options like quarterly or monthly, but as of right now, it has been done at the end of the year. And so, it's due, so that's why we bring it before you.
I have no problem, you know, how we pay it, as long as it is with, we are in compliance with the Act 345.
Yep.
And I'm trying, I'm not trying to withhold that money from the, the people who deserve it and who earned it. My second question. If this, if the system of Act 345 have received more than 20% return on their investment last year, for my information, that's how much they made. Do we get our 5%, which, or any portion of the 5% which we give to the drop program? Do we get it back from the system?
Let me see, is Plant Moran, Martin, I would like to defer that question to Martin, because I admitted that to him, and he does have an answer for that.
Yeah. Martin is supposed to be on here, I spoke with him. Martin, is there, okay.
I just asked him to unmute.
There he is.
I am here.
There he is.
Thank, thank you, Martin.
Okay, go ahead, Martin, if you don't mind.
Could you repeat the question for me? I just wanted to make sure I got it accurate.
With my understanding from the contracts, which I read, that somehow that the city pays 5% interest on the drop program, which is credited quarterly to the participants. And my understanding too, if they make more than 5% on the, on the return of investment, which I don't know if it is the investment of the full pension fund or just the drop fund, that we shouldn't pay any 5% to them since they exceeded the 5% in their return on investment. Last year, the fund made close to 20 or 21%. Does the city get any refund from any portion we paid since they exceeded the 5%?
Okay, good question. So, Councilman Abdalhaq, I did send an email today, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at it. So, we have not done the testing on the drop program when it pertains to the 5% and how much is paid and versus how much the city is supposed. and versus how much the city is supposed to, uh, you know, if you get a refund or anything like that. Um, I did look at the contracts when I was looking at the potential agreed-upon procedures for the drop program. It does look like there's a five percent. I don't know if it's for every single agreement that, because there's three different agreements, um, because the
It is, it is for all three agreements.
Yeah, so if it's if it's identical, it might be five percent, but I don't know for sure if the city has to pay the five percent if the investment returns have been in excess of that. I'm happy to include that in the agreed-upon procedures uh that are done.
That what I would like really to know, if they go over five percent. Does the city still guarantee that five percent or they already exceeded and they made more than five percent?
Yeah, so normally what I would have seen in the past, and I'm not saying specific to the city, but in general, the five percent is a guaranteed, so if the individual earns less than five percent, the individual still gets five percent. If the individual earns more than five percent, I would assume, and again, I'm making the assumption, is that the city doesn't have to pay anything above, you know, the five percent, because the individual's already earned more than that.
The reason I'm asking this question, I spoke to Francois from GRS, the auditor, uh, the actuary, actuary, the uh, the person who prepared the actuary report. And my understanding from my conversations with him that they do include either all the five percent or portion of the five percent in this money which we are transferring. And I want to make it clear to everybody's who think, you know, I'm after their money. No. I want to transfer your money. I want to give the police and fire everything they have in their contract. But I want to understand what we are paying. So I need to know clearly if they have exceeded, because there is nothing clear in this contract, which even said the city has to pay the five percent from what I'm reading. I just want to be clear, if they exceed the five percent, does the city still have the obligation to pay that five percent on top of what they earn? Or we get reduction next year for that? Or we get the credit next year for that money which might be included in this number?
That's a fair question. And so one of the steps that we have suggested right now for the agreed-upon procedures, uh, one of them actually says determined that the participant received the proper interest allocation per the applicable bargaining agreement for the period that's being tested. So we would be looking at that uh during the analysis.
And I will encourage my colleagues to vote to to move this money to the Act three forty-five fund. But at the same time, I would like to ask the pro tem, uh, you know, Mr. Dave Abdullah, please to schedule a closed session with our mayor, our lawyer, and the city council members only to discuss those contracts in a closed session.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. It sounds to me, uh, Martin, like uh, Mr. Abdullah is asking if it's below five percent, obviously, it's us that would have to reimburse for the drop program. But the question is, I think, more specifically, if it's above five percent, do we as a city owe the first five percent? That's, that's the primary question. Are we as a city responsible for the first five percent? Anything else beyond that uh paid by the investment?
Or even if they make more than five percent, do you still pay it, the five percent?
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why I said, would the first, the first, the key word is the first, would the first five percent be owed by us as a city? That's the main question. That's the primary question. Okay, next up, uh, we all set, Councilman Zohair Abdullah?
Yeah, I would like you, please, to schedule.
I will, I will speak with the.
Today, if possible.
I don't know if I'm able to schedule one myself, because we'd have to go based on the council chair's schedule. She's the one that would have to set that up, but I'll make sure and talk to her about it.
Okay, thank you.
The only comment I would add is um, Councilman Abdullah, whenever you get a chance, take a look at the email I sent. See if those are the steps that you would like for Plant Moran to perform. And what I was planning on doing is sending that to the entire council at that point in time to review and make sure that it's something that you would be interested in us having, take a look at. I just want to make sure that the steps would be.
Okay, if if you'll be kind enough to resend it, because I don't know if uh, I have ten pages of email.
No, no problem. I'll send it right now so that we have it at the top.
So please, if you can, thank you.
Martin, is that something you sent fairly recently, or when are we speaking of?
It was uh sent today at nine twenty-seven AM.
I didn't get it.
No, no, I only, so I initially rece- uh, received a request from Councilman Abdullah to look at the draft program.
Okay.
I responded directly to him just to say, okay.
Martin, please send it to everybody so everybody can be on the same page.
I will do that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Next up is Councilman Moby Dune. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Hey, Council Chair, actually, my questions were answered by uh the uh by our treasurer, Hix Clayton. So I'm, I'm all set. Thank you so much.
Okay, excellent. Um, I have a question and and I'm not sure if uh our director Hassan Jamal can answer that. Or uh maybe our treasurer Lisa Hix Clayton, and I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room. My main question is, again, I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room. Why is there, like, I've read everything on this and I've gone through all this and I don't see why there would be even controversy about be, about it being paid if it's due by June the thirtieth, and that's what's always been done. Why is there controversy about this all of a sudden? Somebody's, go ahead and spit it out. Let's go ahead and do that, because if you got a problem with it, let's go ahead and address why.
Okay, uh, can I answer?
Go ahead, Councilman Zohair Abdullah.
Really, I have no problem paying it on time. That's not the issue. The issue is I sent email after email and question after question, and nobody answered me, you know, to my satisfaction about my questions. That's why I figured the only way is maybe to withhold the money. But knowing that we have to send the money, that's not the way it is. That's why I'm asking for a closed session, because there are some things we do not want to discuss publicly. And it has, since it is a contract, we have to discuss it in closed session with our mayor and with our legal department, because they are the ones who go in to negotiate the contracts. And we are the ones who go in to approve it.
The only guy I would disagree with you on that, uh, Councilman Zohair Abdullah, is because it's not necessarily negotiations. We're speaking in regards to a previously signed contract and addressing it. So since it's not negotiations, I'm not sure if it would be necessarily a closed session. But we'll leave our uh clerk and maybe our attorney to discuss and.
The reason, the reason I'm asking, because there is negotiation going on right now.
Right, but your concern, your primary concern is based on the previously signed contract, correct? So if that had been the case, it would not be negotiations, since it's already been approved, therefore it should be in an open session.
I agree, but there are.
I did that.
What you got?
There you go.
Can you repeat that? Uh?
But I'm saying there are some things, uh, I've been advised not to discuss publicly about the previous contract. And that's why uh, you know, for that, say, I recommend closed session. But I do approve and vote yes to move the money today to their pension.
Okay, next up, I believe, is the director Hassan Jamal. Hassan, you have uh three minutes. Go ahead.
He's muted. All right, good afternoon. Uh, what the council means, where Abdullah is concerned, is have nothing to do with the accounting procedures and process. So this has been put on the council for approval, just to make sure we follow the procedure by the charter, which is need to be, to need to be in the general ledger posted and follow the warrant issue process. That's all. Uh, it wasn't done in the past. I don't want to go to the past. But from now on, everything is recorded in our budget under the general ledger. Must go through the procedures of the accounting process of the city charter. We can't just wire money without going through the controller and without going to this certain procedure that we have to follow. Uh, we've been not in compliance for a while, as I said in the past. Not only trying to close that, just be on the border like Mr. Ali Deep did with the engineering. We like to establish our internal control. We have money being wired between the treasurer office and certain funds without going to you for approval. And those are being approved by you in the budget at the beginning of the year under the line item general measures. I did consult with our cooperation council. They agreed. I did consult with uh, Martin specifically, and I had an email. We all agreed. There is a procedure we have to follow, uh, pro tem. That's why it's not really related to what's the concern of the Act three forty-five enters. It's not our concern. We manage the money for Act three forty-five. And the management of money, management of the accounting system must follow this city procedure, because it is within our budget. If the Act three forty-five doesn't want to come through the city council procedure, they'll do like differ. They'll have their own accounting system, wherever, we'll collect the money, the money being collected, one transaction, and we ship the money for them, done deal. But if they want us to break down their accounting system, we have ten different legends, you know, you know, expenditure legends for the Act three forty-five in our general ledger. And we have to follow the procedure. That that's, now, now, some of you will say it wasn't done before. Uh, you know, don't ask me, please, that question.
Okay, thank you, Director. Next up is, uh, I believe, uh, Madam Clerk, is it uh Councilman Robert Coniston or?
Yes, that, I I show Council, Councilman Coniston now.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Councilman.
Well, one of the reasons for the delay may be uh, the former treasurer put uh, about a million dollars into the one fifteen trust account. And without, I don't recall any vote, and then just recently, a few meetings ago, we put the money back. Uh, and it, this would have been done on the last uh city council agenda, but there were some problems with the numbers.
Thank you, Councilman. It's just uh, it was it was adjustment in the numbers. It wasn't, um, okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Councilman. Next up is our attorney Gary Mayatki.
Yes, uh, I was just going to address uh Councilman Abdullah's point. Uh, I believe we had a discussion at one meeting about certain things having to do with the drop program. I think that may have been what he was referring to. I would note that in addition to uh negotiations, uh, certain matters can go into closed session based on an attorney uh, opinion, attorney-client privileged opinion, and that is another way to address past matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, anybody else? Uh, we have our treasurer.
I think they both, they both spoke already.
Already spoken, so if you don't mind, thank you very much. Okay, so at this particular point, we're gonna go ahead. Somebody's.
I think it's time to vote.
Wait, somebody was saying something that was, okay. So at this particular point, we're gonna go ahead and vote on this. And this will be for item eight B.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Uh, Councilman Ray Muscat.
Councilman Muscat, who was seconded by Councilman Baydun.
Oh, Baydun. Okay, motion eight B made by Councilman Ray Muscat, seconded by Councilman Ray, uh, I'm sorry, Moby Dune. We're gonna go ahead and put that to a vote right now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, and I'm trying to flip through these, is comments from uh, council members and members of the public. So we're gonna go ahead and start first with comments from the co- comments from council members. Councilman Ray Muscat, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Council uh Pro Tem Dave Abdullah. Uh, I want to thank uh all of our first responders for the uh work that was done this past weekend. Uh, you know, I was one of the victims of the flood night, you know, I I my heart goes out to everyone uh that's uh been touched by this uh horrible natural disasters that can seem like hover over the city of Dearborn Heights every time it rains. And uh just a a big shout out, I was trying to get home from Jackson Friday night. Uh, I watched our fire trucks going down Beach Daily about uh, I don't know, somewhere between three thirty and four o'clock in the morning, uh, through the uh heavy flooded Beach Daily area. And uh, you know, uh, my heart goes out to you guys, thank you. And uh to all the people who are suffering from uh flooding, uh, I wish there was more I could do for you. Uh, so uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, at this particular point, I'm gonna go a little bit off track, if you don't mind. And if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if you could give our residents a little bit of an update as far as what's been done, what's coming up, uh, how to file claims, et cetera, et cetera. I think this is too important of an issue, and I think it'd be a good idea to have our residents uh get that information, which I I do commend you and your team and administration and everybody else involved with keeping us informed. But just in case people did not go on those types of venues, maybe if you could give us a little bit of an update, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, is there where I can add a few more items? There's a few things I'd like to cover, so I don't have to cover it uh uh afterwards. Can I cover all of them at the same time?
Uh, how long do you need roughly?
Uh, just like, about maybe five, five to ten minutes tops. There's a lot of items to cover.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Okay, so the first, first, I would like to first thank Wayne County for uh everything that they've done, you know, holding an emergency meeting with uh emergency manager Danielle Alzayat and also chief of staff Asad Turfi from Wayne County, for them to execute a quick meeting for for us to go through a lot of, lot of issues. Uh, also, I want to thank uh Governor Whitmer for showing up today and addressing some of the issue. We had a lot of, we had a good discussion. Uh, well, uh, it's actually, we posted on uh, on our city website. Somebody was interested in some of the questions. And also, uh, Congresswoman Tlaib, she also showed up. She was here, uh, you know, to address some of the issues that we have in Dearborn Heights. And I want to thank our emergency manager Lee Gavin, you know, working tirelessly uh since, you know, this thing started. Actually, somebody told me today, he was like, uh, waist-deep water pushing cars out of, uh, you know, the street uh on, you know, Friday night, or Saturday morning, two something in the morning. So I commend them for doing that, taking care of the residents. Thank you, Lee. Um, you know, Bob Ankrapp also, uh, he's been, he's been on the ground helping out with John Zadigan, my chief of staff, Mariana. Uh, Chief Brogan, um, he's, he's, you know, been at the front line. Um, also Elizabeth, you know, I'm sorry for what happened to your house. You know, she's been, you know, she had really bad experience over the weekend in her house. And Mr. Deep, you know, Ali Deep, uh, our engineer, he's been on the ground also helping out with this uh this mess, trying to figure out what we can do with this uh flooding issue. So he's been on the ground going from side, one side of town to the other, trying to help out. Also, I apologize, uh, thank, thanks to the fire department, you know, I saw them, I saw them firsthand what they're trying to do. They saved, you know, a couple uh employees that were stranded at Heinz Park. You know, truck was almost, you know, I mean, it's all the way up, you know, one of the county trucks. The fire department went, got a boat from uh Dearborn, uh, Dearborn Fire Department. They went, uh, rescued the two employees from Wayne County. Thank you so much, the fire department. I also like to apologize for Sergeant Daughter and Officer Core for walking a long distance to my house in the middle of the night. Uh, trying to get, get my attention. I was trying to get a little bit of sleep. You know, finally fell asleep. I could think uh one something in the morning, and they came in, they knocked on my door at, wow, about two something in the morning. And they had to walk all the way. I mean, it was a, it was a good, good distance because of the flooding. Thank you, Sergeant Daughter, Officer Core for that. I appreciate, you know, your dedication as well. So it's just to give you an update, we have a twenty twenty-one survey sheet that the city, uh, it's pretty much, it's just a survey sheet that we need all the residents that are affected by the flooding to come to the city hall. Uh, they can fill one out here, or they can go online. All they have to do is there's a link, they can, soon as they open the city, whoops, uh, the city face, uh, Facebook, it's on there, but also the city link. If they go on there, they can see at the bottom right-hand corner, they get a link to the, uh, the, it says flood. And they'll see the survey. They can fill that out. That's, again, that's just a survey. So what we need to do with the survey, they take this, uh, we we collect the surveys, we provide those to the county, and the county in turn gives it to the state, and that's how the state's gonna advocate for money for the city. You know, how much uh to actually get from FEMA, and they're gonna advocate to the president's office, the uh, the US president, obviously. So we're trying to get, they're trying to advocate to get a lot of money to uh, uh, set some of the, the loss and costs to our residents. So we're trying to get, they're trying to advocate to get a lot of money to set some of the, the loss and cost to our residents in the whole area that is affected. So that, that, that's gonna take a little bit of time, but before we do that, we, we need to keep, keep these surveys going. We gotta get those filled out, you know, our emergency manager Lee Gavin is collecting these, we have over two hundred something homes right now, we got surveys from. And we're, we're getting them by the dozens every day, so let's get that as soon as possible. There's no deadline on those yet, but we still, we need them as soon as possible, so we can provide status, so they can advocate how much money we need to get for the city. And we're also, I know a lot of citizens, they don't have access to computers, or they can't, they don't watch these council meetings. So we're gonna send a made, a big mailer to all the residents. So they can get this copy as well, so they can fill it and send it, so that way, all the residents are aware that there's a sheet they need to fill out to bring to the city hall. So we're gonna make sure all the residents are aware, and we're gonna give it to every resident in the city, we're gonna send it in the next few days. Um, so the Red Cross, they dropped off a lot of that cleaning kit, their bucket, five gallon bucket. We got some at Kane Field and some at Richard A. Young. So if you're affected by the flood, go pick one up, they'll just ask you for your name and your address and your phone number, because that's accountability, we need to give that. Information back to the Red Cross, so we can get more in case we need it. Uh, the second, the last item I wanna cover is somebody on Facebook is making comments that they're negotiating, one of the council members. And I'm sure you all know who it is, making comments that they're negotiating a rate for GFL. Uh, council members are not allowed to call and make suggestions on contracts and negotiating contracts with GFL. And Mr. Miyaki is gonna address that issue, we have a lot of stuff going on, as you know, for the last several months. Uh, well, several months, at least a month, month and a half, we've gotten issues with GFL with pickup. So we're negotiating stuff, there's penalties, and for a council member to call and post on Facebook that they're negotiating a price. That's, that's not the council's, that's not jurisdiction, that's, that's strictly the administration. And also with our city attorney, so please, council members, do not call GFL, discuss any pricing, that's, that's not in your scope as a council member. Um, that's pretty much everything that I wanna cover, I think Mr. Miyaki is gonna address that portion legally. Mr. Miyaki, is it possible to have him say something on that portion?
Gary, go ahead, if you don't mind, about two minutes.
Uh, yes, thank you, I was going to be very brief on this point, again, it is an executive function to end up administering the contracts of the city. Uh, it's very important that the city speaks with one voice. Uh, especially with regard to negotiating anything or bringing any sort of a claim. Um, I think it would be very ill-advised for individual council members to speak about monetary terms. Uh, with GFL. Uh, in particular, the problem would be that you may reveal what would end up potentially being acceptable. And undercut the ability of the mayor and the administration to negotiate. Uh, as forcefully as we otherwise would, if our position is undercut by suggesting the GFL. What would otherwise be acceptable to the city council. Uh, so I would, I would strongly advise you to refrain from engaging in any sort of negotiation in this regard. Um, and if you have any questions about what may or may not be a problem under those circumstances, as always, please feel free to contact me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Council Chair, I'm sorry, I know you asked that question earlier in the, in the meeting. With, with GFL, with, I know some council members asked that question. And I know a councilman Baydun came to the office here asking, you know, another question, so I wanna answer. So for GFL, they are gonna do pickups for the whole week, they're, they're trying to do, obviously, their, their regular scheduled pickup. They're gonna try to take whatever they can, what's on the, on the curb side. Uh, however, there's some stuff that is, it's gonna be heavy, they can't take everything at the same time. They're gonna try to take that by the end of the week, like hopefully by Saturday. Even with that, you know, they, they might not be able to make it next Saturday, so we are, myself and Emergency Manager Lee Gavin. Are working with them, we're talking to them on a daily basis, so we're trying to see if we can clean up our city, get the stuff off the curb side. So please, all the residents, you know, make sure you put everything on curb side and just be patient. The GFL has, has to cover, I don't know how many communities, but Dearborn is in a bigger mess than we are. And there's one street, they got more stuff, like us, we have like every few houses, they'll have something out there, if you go to some areas in Dearborn. They have stuff, house to house, so they, I think they're predicted having at least a hundred trucks that they have to bring in. To clean up the mess in just both cities, so be patient, you know, leave your stuff out there. And yes, we are talking to GFL, and they're gonna pick that stuff up. Uh, last thing is if you, for council members, residents, I know it's been crazy over here, you know, I apologize, you know, we're doing everything we can with my team. Uh, for any updates, we're keeping everybody informed on a city website, we're putting more than once a day, two, three times a day with updates on what's going on. Any new updates, we'll post it on our city Facebook and also on a city website. So please refer to that, if there's anything, any question, refer to that, if you need more information, you can ask us, but you know, everything that we get up to the last minute, we, we post it just to make sure. All the residents and all the council members are aware of what's going on in the city.
Mr. Mayor, one of the questions that, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but one of the questions some residents have asked. Cause you said put the stuff out curb side all the way up to next Saturday, up to, I assume, and including next Saturday, is that correct?
Well, this, yes.
It's coming Saturday, it's coming Saturday, but the question that they had, is that only during their garbage pickup day? Or is, can they put it out, like, let's say hypothetically, if somebody's garbage pickup day is Friday, can they put the stuff at curb side today?
Um, let, can I have Mr. Lee Gavin answer that, because he had the latest conversation with Sam.
Okay, Chief Lee Gavin?
Ten minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we spoke with GFL today, in fact, I gave them a general tour of the city. Like the mayor was saying, not every block, you know, not five, six homes, so it's scattered. So what they say is, A, get the trash out of the basement as soon as you can, so get it out to the curb. They will try to get it in their normal trash pickup days, such as today in a certain portion of North End. What they don't get, they're planning on bringing in to maybe a hundred trucks Saturday. And pick up the remaining trash. So if they can get it on your normal pickup day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday this week. They'll try, if not, they'll be out Saturday, but we want residents to get everything outside, get it out of the house. Again, on the website, there's some ways to, you know, sanitize your house and use a bleach. We have, like the mayor said, we have the form out there, and that form is basically statistical for our records, we will forward that to the county. We have to have a preliminary report into them next week. They will naturally send it up to the governor, who then will send it up to the president or congress or senate, and they'll have to decide if FEMA will get involved. If they do, then that would be between the individual homeowner, the resident, and FEMA. If you recall back from our last flooding event in the South End. It took about six to nine months before FEMA got involved, so there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of. Lot of issues there with the government, so it takes a while, so we ask our residents, make sure you turn in those forms, it gives us a good estimate. So we can submit to the county, so when they submit something up, we have, you know, good representation of our city. Um, we ask our residents if they have any questions, you know, call the mayor's office, between us and Public Works, we've been fielding, fielding the calls all day. On that form, if you need assistance, we're still working on getting more volunteers, since there's so many flooded families and, and homes in our city. You know, people are helping their family and friends first, so we're still working on the volunteers, but we have a list going, and we'll see what we can do. Just so everyone knows, you know, Saturday night, in, in fact, Friday night when this started. Um, Mr. Muscat said he was out, and yeah, our streets, if you were sleeping, you really didn't see the full effect. Beach Daily was closed, Beach and Hass, Cherry Hill. Numerous amounts of water, by the morning it start receding. And the mayor was here, he was up and running, and his chief of staff, so they were here all day Saturday, and put in long hours Sunday. What I wanna remind our residents is, if anybody's got still any standing water. To please call, and we'll let the Public Works know, talking to them today. Most all homes have, should have receded, but if there's any water left in there, there could be a different type of issue with the drains, and they'll come out and take a look. They went out to a few homes today, I know the city, and, you know, cause there's still water, and they corrected that situation. So if there's any homes, you know, make sure you call us, so we can get someone out there, that water should all be receded by now. Unless there's any questions, you know, Mr. Deep, we did ask him this morning, a lot of residents complaining, hey, is there something with our sewer system or drainage? But he briefed us this morning that the system is up and running. It's, maybe he could address on it, but it's just the amount of water from all the rain. On our calls from the weather service, we had three inches between eleven at night and two in the morning on Friday night. So he told us just the abundance of the rain, and that was the issue. Um, so maybe he, in a minute or so, maybe he could address it, but unless there's any questions, I should be done.
Okay, thank you, our emergency manager, Lee Gavin. Madam Clerk, can you let in the next council member? And Director Ali Deep, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have you comment during the announcement section. I'm gonna go a little bit off track from typical protocol. But this is too important of an issue, we just wanna make sure all the residents get well informed, so I, I'm not worried about protocol at this particular point. I'm more concerned that the information gets out there to the residents. Uh, who's the next person?
Council, Councilman Coniston.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the mayor's office and our emergency manager and emergency management department. And our police and fire for all they did. This flood unfortunately really affected adversely, it appears, the North End of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn. I had a question regarding the claim form. Uh, I know, or I heard some people were walking around distributing the claim form. And I would encourage everyone to notify their homeowner's insurance carrier. And the city, but are the, is the claim form available in paper format, or is it just online, and who should fill it out? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, can you answer that, or is that something for the emergency manager to answer? Adam Clerk?
Yeah, the emergency manager is gonna answer that part, a portion of it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lee Gavin, please.
Okay, the form is online, also, we got copies here in city hall, when you come into the door, the old screening center, right? When you come into the left, we have those forms up there with the sign, Flood Survey, so complete those, and then we take them here in the office. Stephanie is logging them off, so we'll get a final list shortly as to how, you know, the total numbers in the city. So they're available either online, there's a little site there and a homepage, or you can come in city hall and get them.
But just to, just to be clear on that, if they filed that, that's not, Mr. Lee Gavin, if they filed it, it's not necessarily a claim, at this particular point, you're just doing kind of a survey, trying to get a. Uh, an idea as to how much the total cost is gonna be, but it's not an official claim, correct?
You're right, it is just a survey, it's, so we get our totals straight, so we can give the proper information to Wayne County. Some residents have called and said Dearborn's using a claim number or something. That might be a reference number, ours is just a survey, so we get the proper information, and it gives us the contact information of the resident. So if down the road, we get some additional information from our congresswomen or whatever, we can let the residents know via phone call or email.
So another quick question, Lee, is residents have asked, they have insurance, and then there's the FEMA, potential FEMA money. Are they allowed to file for both, or is it just one or the other?
No, we recommend them to file with their insurance company, FEMA is only a possibility, and that could be six months, nine months. A year, whenever the president and his staff determine its issue. We have to remember, we had a major flood here, but around the country, there's, you know, forest fires, there's tornadoes, so. They look at all and determine what needs the most assistance, so.
Can they still get money if they've already received insurance money is what I'm asking?
And that would be between FEMA and the individual person, they, they kinda gauge what you got from your insurance company and what they will submit to you. And that would be, like I said, individually between you and the FEMA agent, the city's out of it, the state's out of it. We would set it up at the library or somewhere where it would be an individual meeting between the residents and a FEMA rep.
I see, thank you, emergency manager.
Council Chair.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, real quick, I'm sorry, I missed something for, so when you send the assessment, yeah, it's definitely don't, we don't wanna mistake that with a claim, so do, we, we as, I mean, the city council, everybody, do not use that term, claim. All we're doing is the assessment, we're just doing a survey, that's, that's all it is.
And that's what I'm trying to clarify, cause a lot of people called me and said they've already made a claim, and I said, no, that's not a claim yet, that's, it's just, they're just trying to get an idea, as what the total cost is gonna be.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're just gonna call it a survey assessment, and also, real quick, make sure when, when the residents submit that, we don't want pictures, you know, the pictures, they can save that. Uh, for the future, when FEMA gets a hold of them. So right now, we're, like, just today alone, we got five hundred emails with pictures. So we don't, we, we don't need pictures, all we're gonna do is get the assessment form and put the information to send to the county, so the pictures. We, obviously, we have to delete those, because, you know, we can't use them, we're just gonna get the information from the one sheet, no pictures, so save those. So when you get somebody from FEMA to get a hold of the individuals, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, can you let the next person in, please?
It would be Councilman Abdalhak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
First, I wanna thank all the first responders in our city for the great work they've done. And I wanna thank everybody who's helping a neighbor, helping a friend, helping relative. Because we all one city and we need to help each other. I was one of the victims, we had a flood, we cleaned all night too. But nobody, thank God, is hurt, it's only, you know, some carpets and some furniture. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was very pleased to see you out there with your team. Because the people need to hear from the leaders, they need to be comforted, they need to know that there is a leadership in the city. And they need to know there is somebody who cares for them. And I thank you for taking that role, and I thank you for keeping us informed. And I ask you, the more information you can give out to our resident, the better it is at any time, in any way or form. So please keep doing this, because our cities around us did not tell their residents anything. So that's the best thing to do at this time. And I wanna ask, there are lots of people really who got hurt harder than other people, and they may not be financially able. To help themselves or replace a furnace, replace water heater. Can we establish some kind of emergency fund? To help those people in urgent need before FEMA and before the insurance and before anybody. We owe it to our residents at least, especially disabled seniors or very low-income people, we owe, we owe it to them. To create something like that financially, to help them as soon as possible. Cause from experience, some of those claims during the previous flood took one year and a half to two years. And some people really cannot wait that long. I appreciate it, if you bring something to the city council, if the money is available, even if it is not available, let's make it available. And there are people in need, and I can guarantee you the city council will cooperate with you. And I thank you guys again, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Councilman Abdalhak, next person up, Madam Clerk?
We have Councilman Baydun.
Councilman, go ahead.
Oh, oh, where'd you go?
Thank you, I'm here, thank you, I got it, thank you, I think Jordan beat you to it.
Okay.
Oh. I wanna begin by saying, thank you so much to this council for coming together, and, and, and I'm sorry that we had to bring the special meeting. But I'm kinda glad that we had the special meeting, so that the mayor can inform us with what's going on, and I also wanna go ahead and just thank the administration for being very. uh, for being very uh, very open, very transparent during these, you know, difficult times like many in here. Uh, like our director Elizabeth uh, and I believe Councilman Abdulhaq, Councilman Muscat. And I'm sure many others uh, have have been flooded. I just had some people over, they were giving me estimates, so I had to keep leaving in and out of this meeting. But I still had it on, I can still hear, they were just right behind us. Uh, but I also want to say to our first responders, thank you so much. I know that uh, the firefighters from just talking to, was it Chief Brogan today? Who told me he was, you know, in and out of people's basements, helping people remove things out of their house. I know Councilman Tom Wanso was in the streets with his boots on the ground, uh, as 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 he always is. Thank you to Councilman Tom Wanso as well. Thank you to our 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 council, Pro Time Abdullah. I know that you've been very informative to a lot of the residents. When they've reached out to me, they've said they've spoken with Councilman Abdullah as well. Um, and 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 to me, it's, I just want everybody to know that, you know, before being appointed and I, you know, this isn't a uh, an election year and I'm not saying this because I'm on the ballot, but I'm saying this sincerely. I I I was always encouraging our council prior to being on here that we must be a voice for the residents and 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 today, the residents have been complaining, they're hurt, uh, and I can, you know, and I can feel their their pain. And I want you guys to know that as as being on this council, I'm going to push as hard as I can to make sure that we can find funding. Uh, working hand in hand with our administration uh, for the residents that are that are going through what they're going through, even if that means, you know, having to fill out forms for our seniors or or or, you know, whatever, you know, helping them without whatever claim it is. I know that we are also receiving twenty-four million dollars, or we did receive the twenty-four million dollars. I'm not sure if that money is gonna be able to be used. I kinda see the mayor nodding his head, so I will refrain from that. But I will say that we need to find a way to help out these residents. I know that the South End has been dealing with this for several years and I think uh, come to the next meeting, I'd love to see if our administration can put something on the um, on the agenda to find ways to fix the sewer issue. This is not something that we're gonna sleep on. And I'm going to make it my priority. I'm going to continue to work with our engineer, uh, Director Deeb and and the Mayor's Office and our corporate counsel and my colleagues to make sure that this doesn't continue to happen anymore. Because I think, you know, in in twenty twenty-one, witnessing what's happened in Dearborn Heights for all these years, I I think it's enough's enough. And I know it's not, it's not on this council, it's not on this administration and maybe not even on the past, but we need to come up with a solution. Uh, I know I had a conversation with our uh, with our Mayor's Office and our Director Deeb today. You know, there there's going to be a solution and and I'm excited to, you know, see those solution and I'm going to be holding everybody accountable in the near future and expecting a solution to come forward. Uh, because we owe it to the residents. Uh, and lastly, just to leave it out here. Um, I'm 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 so sorry about this, but uh, I lost my train of thought. Um, you know what? Good job to everybody today. Thank you so much to our uh, our our um, Councilman Abdulhaq and and Councilman Ray Muscat and Councilman Tom Wanso and Councilman Bob Conson. Uh, our Mayor's Office and obviously our Pro Time, who we thank very much for hosting this meeting today and just allowing us to go ahead and pass everything unanimously today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you bring the next person up, please?
We have Councilman Wenzel.
Councilman, go ahead.
You're up.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, a lot of stuff was said already, so I won't repeat it. Um, one thing is I wanna definitely thank the Mayor's Office and uh, uh, Lee Gavin, Bob Amcraft, uh, John Zadikian and Chief of Staff Hernandez. Uh, I was personally witnessed them in action and it was pretty thrilling to see what was going on and uh, the extent that uh, they they participated in all the activities and the things that led up to where we are today. Um, I especially wanna thank our residents. I'm very impressed with their attitude. Sure, you know, in situation, they're gonna be all upset, but we've had nothing bad happen, which is the, which is a good thing. And the people I've talked to, they're disappointed and sad, but their attitudes were still good, uplifting. Most uh, said, hey, let's let's move on and uh, let's let's get this thing fixed. And we're gonna do the best we can at the city council and uh, I'm sure the administration's gonna do the same to see this problem never happens again. And um, a couple of things is uh, before you throw your stuff out to the curb, please take a photo of it for your records and any kind of insurance records. And one of the forms that we passed out in the beginning on Saturday did uh, state send email your photos and and receipts to that email address. So um, Mayor, is that something we're not gonna be doing anymore is mailing emailing photos and receipts?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. So yeah, we don't uh, yeah, we never asked for uh, for anything right now, no receipts. The only thing we're gonna fill out is that form I showed you on uh, we had the other day. That's it, that's the. Yeah, so we just, we just fill out that form and turn it into the to our office or do it online. Yeah, no, no pictures, no receipts. Save those for the FEMA folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council Pro Town.
Thank you, Councilman. Next person up, Lynn, I see you on there, you?
I am.
Go ahead.
As 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 the clerk, I'm I'm speaking. I, first of all, I would, I empathize with everyone that's got hit by this. Um, I've been in the community for thirty-six years. I do not have a basement, but my gla- garage flooded. And guess where my storage is? In the garage. So um, I I do feel, yeah, I gotta go home and continue drying things out in there. But I am happy to see that um, Heinz Drive is uh, doing and the golf course is doing what it was meant to do. And um, if you have been down on Beach Daily, you can look on both sides, east and west and it was pretty darn flooded on Saturday when I went over there. Um, I was here in the office on Friday and Saturday. I know I sent an email out to um, our DP um, DPW superintendent and ICC, the council members. And to quote Dave Abdullah, I'm going to be the elephant in the room. Because every time it every time it rains, we have to um, cover up Georgianne's um, desk with plastic. Because is there's a chance of this office leaking. We keep all the vital records in here. And we um, and we have all the election business. While it's locked up in a cabinet, we don't know when or where. Um, I did come up here on Saturday, went through the um, the pit crew room, the election room, where all of our tabulators are kept, which are expensive. And um, and um, I just wanted to know, I I I haven't gotten a response. I know everybody has been busy. Um, I did also want to thank our staff here, Georgianne, Dana and Kathy for constantly having to get up today um, to address residents' concerns because they could not get to um, because the treasurer's office was closed due to flooding. So they had to put in extra time. Not, they're not the only ones, but we're the first office on the right, so guess where they stop. Um, so thank you to our staff here for stepping up as they always do. Um, so that's that's what I, that's all I have to say for now.
I thought we had a, we had approved um.
You did, um, uh, December eighth, actually.
Right.
And I think um, at the time, Director Selmy had said that he was waiting for the weather to break. Uh, but I have been in here uh, the last two weekends and had to put um, plastic on Georgianne's dust because that's typically where it is. There's electrical outlet on the ground. I don't know if that water will get in that. I'm not Councilman Muscat can probably address that more.
Roger, the mayor, uh, Councilman Ray Muscat, go ahead.
Uh, you know, and and let me apologize to our our clerk. Uh, I told her today that I would bring that up and uh, like the rest of my body, my mind is short, okay? Uh, but uh, you know, we did approve this money to fix this, this uh, roof on this uh, our city hall. We need to get that project done ASAP. I mean, um, I I have walked into city hall where I saw that plastic hanging there and I said, boy, you talk about someone coming into our our city and seeing something like that and and it's embarrassing. Uh, plus all the uh, you know, damage that could be done to uh, electronic devices. And uh, let's face it, water and electricity do not mix, okay? And um, I I again, I wanna apologize to city clerk that I did not mention it. Um, but we 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 need to fix that and you're correct, uh, Pro Town, that we did approve that money. So I I behoove that uh, Mr. Ali Deep can look into that and get that roof fixed. And uh, also Mayor Bill Bazey uh, to get that roof fixed. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Bill Bazey, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you, Council Chair. So I did actually ta- talk to Mr. Deeb uh, over the weekend uh, on this issue. And uh, we're, we're gonna look at the uh, an option to get it done as soon as possible. The company that wanted, that bid on it uh, with uh, because of, you know, the budgets that we had, you know, with the money. Uh, and plus, you know, during COVID, you know, no- nothing was done. Um, they uh, they, you know, we we were not in uh, in line for for work from that company. So now, uh, the amount of time that laps, so they're doing other stuff. So I don't know if if we're slated to get anything done, especially with everything with the construction uh, equipment and uh, the prices and everything. So I asked Mr. Deeb actually to look into it and just to will get the best possible way to get the roof fixed as soon as possible. So he's working on it. I know uh, he's on it today, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, next up, Madam Clerk?
I think Councilman Muscat, did you wanna say something or we just didn't lower your?
No, that was this.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Councilman. Um, if all the council members are done.
I believe spoke already, Councilman Conston, were you all set?
I'm all set.
Yeah, he's all set. I think uh, the council of the elected officials are all set. I don't see any hands, so we have, I'm sorry, your turn, your turn, announcements.
It's okay. So what I'm gonna do is at this particular point, I'm gonna go, actually, you know what? There's still Hassan Jamal that has his hand up.
Okay.
Hassan, I'm gonna go to Director Ali Deep, but I'm gonna give you two minutes to go ahead and say what you have to say. And I'll go to Ali Deep to give us a uh, not only an update, but just clarify for a lot of the residents, what is going on as far as the, you know, the infrastructure is concerned. Uh, go ahead, Hassan.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm responding to uh, Mr. Councilman Zerablak regarding the programs which may be av- available for the resident who can't afford. We do have a program already in place with the C E D D, Department of uh, Community and Economic Development with C D B G. And we are currently working with HUD to actually allocate more money if it's possible. The possibility is there. And uh, you will have something there. Uh, the mayor is aware of that. We are working with the mayor, with Mariana. And we're gonna put something for the resident very soon. Uh, that's from the availability of the fund responding. There is, there is a other division of of this particular issue, which is prevention. Uh, me and Engineer Ali who are working on funding a cause, uh, a root cause analysis for this situation. Uh, you know, uh, with the Mayor's Office, we're trying to see if uh, if we can put uh, some fund to do that, responding to all the councils who are mad about why it's been uh, there for years and years, nothing happens. So the the root cause analysis is very important. And prevention is actually better than reaction. So that's exactly the direction of the mayor. I I I have a steve message to to Mariana today, so we get a focus on prevention. So this is will never happen, or at least we know what's going on. And the funding is uh, most likely available. And we will inform you very soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jamal. At this particular point, just to give an update to our residents and most importantly, to inform our residents as far as our particular infrastructure, um, Mr. Ali Deep, one of our directors, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Co- Councilman Pro Town. Um, so as we all know by now, it was a major storm event uh, combined with an estimated uh, three and a half inches overnight and seven and a half inches of uh, rainfall in a short period of time uh, over the weekend. So that's compared to five point eight inches of rain in twenty-four hours back in August twenty fourteen. And that was called the Hundred Year Storm. So um, as um, uh, Director Jamal indicated, uh, root cause analysis of the troubled area of our city uh, will be initiated shortly by this uh, department. And the idea is to try to determine if any measures could have been implemented. Uh, or to pre- to to prevent or to mitigate um, uh, storms, knowing that issues like this will always happen. Uh, we're looking at, and that was uh, again, based on what our discussion earlier. Now that we have technical s- uh, staff uh, on board, we're looking at um, options uh, to 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 move us forward. Uh, so please keep in mind that our city is part of a regional storm and sanitary system. And that means that flow from neighboring communities will mix with our own flow. So when I'm looking at uh, uh, capacity, when I'm looking at storm system capacity or sanitary capacity, I'm looking at a region. So for the south end of Dearborn Heights, I'm part of a fourteen communities that flow through the same system. And on the north end, um, I flow on sanitary side. So I have to consider for storm, I consider the uh, um, uh, the entire community, the watershed and the capacity of the system. So we're looking at all these things. So if the um, flooded streets, just keep in mind, flooded streets would reduce basement flooding. Because in heavy storm event, uh, there is no unlimited capacities. Our system, if it, if we have that much uh, uh, rainfall in a short period of time, you're going to exceed the pipe capacity, the conveyance system capacity. And flooding will occur. So we're trying to determine now if we can mitigate that, but street flooding would reduce basement flooding. Now, um, on the plant status capacity, and that's something to keep in mind, uh, we are watching our um, the plant capacity to determine what impact that will have on our community. So uh, to that extent, Downriver Sewer Disposal System, last report this morning indicated no significant uh, uh, issues at all. So pump stations and tunnel levels have dropped from hundred and ninety million gallons a day, to give you an idea, on Saturday to less than a hundred uh, today. And it's uh, two hours ago, it was in the eighties. So eighty million gallons a day, that's good news. That means my system capacity is currently being restored for the next event. Um, on the Middle Rouge River side, Wayne County, which is our C S O operator for Heinz Drive, uh, reported discharging treated combined, treated combined sewer into the Middle Rouge uh, uh, river. And that was due again on Saturday and Sunday to heavy rain flowing into the R uh, R T B, which is the Retention Treatment Basin. So the retention treatment basin experienced uh, outflow. And then once that takes place, the standard operating procedure is to um, uh, release it, treat it and release it. And again, this is in full compliance of our NEPIS permit, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Permit. So these events um, uh, took place twice last weekend at eleven AM, eleven eighteen AM on six twenty-five and again at one AM on six twenty-six. And then finally, we had some untreated C S O were discharged out of uh, outfalls L forty-one and L forty-two, forty-two. Um, again, uh, we don't know the volume yet because we still collecting, ASI is collecting the data. And as soon as we have um, um, an idea of the volume that was discharged, we will report it. Now, the good news is, um, our system capacity, barring any more, no more uh, high level, high volume events, our system capacity is currently being restored. So we will keep an eye on the system. But again, um, you know, no major issues with the conveyance. It was just simply too much, too fast.
Mr. Deeb, question I have for you. So I I realize that this, you know, it doesn't always rain this much and I know uh, you know, this is once in a, you know, uh, sometimes we say lifetime, sometimes we say every hundred years. But the reality is, there are gonna be days where it's gonna rain a lot, just like it did. What can we do as a city as far as our infrastructure is concerned to do preventative, you know, uh, measures? So that this doesn't happen again. Because although it sounds beautiful to tell people, you know, this is once in a great while that this happens. Reality is, when people's basements get flooded, uh, they don't care at that particular point. What can we do as a city? And and I know you may not have all the answers right now, but maybe you could lead a committee, start looking into this, of what things in our infrastructure have to be changed so that we could probably could never eliminate it, but at least minimize this type of situation.
Yes, sir. So so as part of um, first thing I did today was try to get my hand on all the data that our neighboring communities, that will give me an idea on the on the report, on the uh, uh, amount of flow that was taking place in our, because before you design a conveyance system, piping system or retention, you need to know the volume. So we've got that order today. I'm expecting it the next few days. But uh, almost all communities, and we are in touch with all the communities on the water, uh, on the watershed that we share. So they're all basically reporting the same issues we are. So hopefully, as a community, as a group, we were able to do it. Again, my my piping system, both sanitary and storm is conveying someone else's. Is conveying someone else's uh flow as well. So what we need to do to design a solution. It have to, will have to be a a a system that accommodate everyone. I am not in isolation. Dearborn Heights doesn't have its own system connected to the river or to the sanitary, and then uh you know, away from everybody else. We we're not, we're connected in the series. So we are talking to adjacent communities. The the problem may not be ours alone. You know, we might be able to share a solution with someone else. Inxter, for instance, Dearborn, for instance, I mean, we share the same issue. So we are looking at that. Hopefully, now that we have our own uh uh staff, a technical staff with a new director of D P W that I can rely on. Who's an engineer with it with myself and and our consultants, we should be able to come up with um. Hopefully, a plan for the next event.
Thank you, Mr. Deep.
Yes, sir.
Um Madam Clerk, who's uh well, actually, before we go to some of the residences, is there any announcements? From anyone in our administration?
We have um um Parks and Rec Director Kim Conston with her hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna unmute her.
Uh Director Conston.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that um I've rescheduled the event that's actually was planned for this Thursday at. Warren Valley Golf Course uh with the Concert in the Park, and we've moved it to um July twenty eighth. Um obviously because of the flooding, but also because there's a sixty percent chance of rain that day. So I'm trying to be proactive so that we don't end up having to cancel it uh last minute. So um the new date is July twenty eighth. At Warren Valley Golf Course, and it's gonna be a great event. Um we've added a few extra things, and we'll be getting a new flyer out for the event as well. So um if anybody has any questions, they can give us a call.
Thank you, Director.
What day of the week is that?
Um I think it's a Thursday.
Oh, it is a Thursday, okay.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Welcome.
Is there any other announcements from anybody in the administration? Okay, hearing none. At this particular point, we're gonna go to public comments. This is.
Um Council Chair, sorry, I I'm not sure if Mr., I'm not sure if Mr. Jamal had spoken, his hand was also up.
He had spoken already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I apologize.
Mariana.
Oh, Mariana and um Director Hashim's up there too as well.
Okay, excellent. Then uh Chief of Staff, Mariana, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. For some reason, I had problems connecting through my computer, but I just wanted to also remind people. That we are currently applying for the FEMA Home Purchasing Program for flood mitigation. So if you do live in, for the residents, if they do live in a area that is prone to flooding, not due to this particular flood. That was out of the ordinary, we are currently putting in an application for that and looking for volunteers that might be looking to sell their houses. In those flood zones in order for the city to purchase them and turn them into green zone areas in order to try to prevent flooding in the future as well. So just a reminder, that form is also available on the website. It is also available here at City Hall, and they can return them. To my email or to the mayor's office. My email is m hernandez@ci. That Dearborn Heights dot M I dot U S. Thank you.
Okay, Mariana, thank you for all your hard work during this this uh kind of flooding. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And again, apologies for all the phone calls that we've been getting. Our our phones are blowing up, but we are trying to get to as many people as we can. At the mayor's office and special thanks to Megan as well in the H R department who has been helping us today with a lot of those phone calls. And filling out those forms for the residents. So thank you to everyone that's been working hard this this entire season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariana. Next up is Director Hashim. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I am going to Georgie and you have him. I don't know which one.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bazey. Good evening, council members. I just wanna piggyback a little bit. I almost with the Director Jamal said. That we do have two programs currently at C D B G or C E D D. Uh one of them is an emergency rehab program where you can apply to. Uh the telephone number seven nine one thirty five hundred. Please call us. This is a very quick program. It probably, the turnaround is about two, two and a half weeks. We can help you put in your uh. Uh H VAC units and whatever you need to do on an emergency basis. We also have the rehab program, and I know I, this is I conveyed that to the administration and to Director Jamal as well. And to the Chief of Staff, we have the rehab program that would help you pretty much rehab the whole house, including the basement and any damage that you have. Uh incurred. I'm deeply sorry about every about every house that have received that damage, obviously. Uh this rehab program is available to all qualified residents. Uh uh we have the money available for that. Again, the phone number is three one three seven nine one thirty five hundred. The full rehab does take a while to. Uh you know, to come into fruition. I wanna say it's about four to six weeks, but it is available. And it might be very helpful to all of our residents. I wanna thank the mayor and I wanna thank the city council for all their support and all their help. Thank you very much, and you all have a great evening.
Thank you, Director Hashim. At this particular point, Madam Clerk, before we go to the public, I see. Uh Councilman Zerap, you still have a question or?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment. Uh during conversation uh last week with somebody who's considered expert in plumbing. Uh he mentioned that if we put back uh backflow prevention system in every house. The flooding will not happen. I want to ask uh Engineer Deep if that is true.
No, I can say that myself, no.
Mr. Deep, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Backflow prevention devices are for water supply, for the most part, uh on the um, that wasn't the problem. The problem was sanitary and storm, and there were many reasons for the floods. Um not in, not all the floods that I looked at were caused by city systems. Uh I'm gonna say over sixty percent, the city pipes were flowing properly. It was a customer connection that flooded. Meaning that um rainwater going into the foundation drains did not have, it had blockage, it didn't reach the city system. It back backflowed into the customer, into the citizens' houses, and that was quite a, in in many cases, that was the case. So I don't know about backflow that, no, I'm not um, no, sir.
Okay.
I I disagree with that.
My my second question, are we going to have in any future solution to this problem? And what does it take for all the communities to get together to do this, so we don't have this problem again?
Okay, so as I indicated earlier, we're looking at uh solutions, and 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 is it possible? Yes. Um is it expensive? Yes. Um I mean, we we just need to work together on try to come up with a combined. Um something like like um a retention area, you know, something like in in area like uh Heinz Drive. To intentionally flood in the rain event as opposed to a system flood in homes and cities. So that would be part of the things that we need to discuss, but again, it will have to be addressed on a regional basis. So you look at the entire watershed and you you define the communities that have these issues. Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Taylor, uh Garden City, I believe, was one of the uh uh cities. And then we look at areas that will be uh appropriate, you know, at locations that will be. Able to address that. So you'll have to pick up the primary conveyance system, not a secondary twelve inch pipe. You know, primary conveyance system, and then take it diverted that way. Uh is it, is it um possible? Yes. We just have to work for it, you know.
Now, for South End, the old incinerator, we have a property sitting there for a long time.
Yeah.
Could that be utilized and we can do it on our own and without anybody else?
And 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 additional properties that you just currently purchased, you know, in the flood area, absolutely. You know, this is, this is again, this is what what we call planning, master plan. You put these things together, and it'd be many pieces. But at least you have to have a plan. So yes, absolutely, to your point, we do have some properties that we currently purchase. And these properties are in an area that could, you know, help do it. Yes, is it doable? Absolutely.
Okay, I just want the residents to know this is going to cost money. I wish that we can put some numbers in front of our residents, and they might say yes, and they are willing to pay it. So we need to tell the public the truth as is.
Yes, sir. And then also be able to to with a with a uh ready to start, you know, with a project, ready defined project. You might be able to go and seek funding elsewhere as opposed to taxing the citizen, but you have to have something in hand. So if I go and approach a government agency, I need to have in hand a plan, a a project, you know, ready for construction. That so we may have to develop that plan and pay for it, but actual hard construction dollars, we can look elsewhere for. But I just need to get to that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh Madam Clerk, I don't see any other directors or any other.
Well, I, you know, Kim Constance on there again, but she was already up once, and Tom, uh Councilman Wenzel, I'm sorry, was up there. But I think he spoke already, I'm not sure.
Okay, so Councilman Wenzel, do you have anything else that you needed to add? Since you've already gone up, it had to be some some short, and the same thing for. Director Conston.
I I am worried, okay, I go.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify the black backflow uh comments by uh Councilman Abdul Haq. Um many residents have backflows on their sanitary sewer lines going out of the house. Which prevents the flow to come back into the house, but I've spoke with many, many people who have the backflow. Uh and and they 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 failed. So they're not, they're not, to answer the question is, they they do work to some extent, but they're not foolproof.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. And Director Conston, do you have something short you wanna add? Usually.
Yes, actually.
But we'll get you back on.
Actually, all I did was uh give you their incorrect day. It's the twenty eighth, but it is a Wednesday, not a Thursday. For the new event, okay?
Excellent. Thank you very much, Director. So at this particular point, we're gonna go to public comments. Each and every one of you will have three minutes to comment on just about anything related to the city. And Madam Clerk, can we let in the first resident, please?
Let's unmute myself. We have Vince Dombrowski and Georgie, and I don't wanna mess it up. Do you wanna ask him? To unmute? And I will lower his hand. That's a team.
Yes, we got Vince.
All right, thank you. Uh take two, everybody. Um thank you, Mr. uh. Sheriff Protem, uh Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Mr. Miyake. Um one thing I would like to comment on is item uh A A, the water disposition. Um I would have to agree with this hundred percent because um I would like to see an additional person. Besides the city doing its own testing. Uh that way, we're not completely liable. Um if there's any major type of liability, that way we have an outside source. Um and that's what I got to say about that. Um and then the other item that I was going to address. Was addressed by the mayor a lot more elegantly than what I would have done. So um that's been covered regarding. Uh council members thinking they can go out and uh make special contracts when you know do that. Uh so thank you for covering that, Mr. Mayor. Um and hands off to our staff. That was out there all weekend. Uh you guys are the best. Um and this is the best performance I've seen. In eighteen years. Um and I've been a resident of Dearborn Heights for fifty years, and. I think we're headed in the right direction. I'd like to keep heading that way. And uh everybody have a good evening. Thank you for your time and um pray for everybody who's been affected that uh things go easier for you. And uh have a good night. Thank you.
Vince, thank you for always participating in the council meetings. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Chair. Uh we have Leslie Windlass. I've unmuted her, so you're good to go.
Leslie, go ahead.
Um hi, I just wanted to know if anybody had troubleshooted the website link that was posted on social media for people to. One, volunteer, and two, to get help, because one, I had signed up to be a volunteer, but I didn't get any um. I didn't get any response, any email response or any call to volunteer, so I volunteered um in Dearborn today. Uh with Abdullah, um um we've been out here all day. The first two houses we did were in the north end of Dearborn Heights, and both of them said they. Had filled out in our city and hadn't got a response. So I just wanted to make sure people had actually troubleshooted and tried it out, and make sure the responses are going. Coming in and people are responding to them. And then the second, um the second question I wanted to know is, I I might have missed it. I came in like fifteen to twenty minutes late, but I was wondering how our um residents who are elderly or who just don't use social media. Are being up uh updated on what's going on. I know I heard that there's things being posted on the website, and there's things being posted on social media. But there are a lot of people who don't navigate the internet well and who don't have social media profiles. So are we calling them? Do we have a list? And those are my only two things. And also thank you to everybody who's been out volunteering with us today and all weekend, and have a great day. I hope everybody. Get safe and get their houses all dried out.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you for all you do. Uh I think the answers would probably go, Mr. Mayor, you wanna answer that? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you, uh Ms. Windlass for the for the question. Uh so uh with the volunteer sheet. Uh we did have a heckup on at the first day. Uh we did correct it. Uh we're gathering a lot of names. We have over two hundred. Right now, uh residents that they need help. So um we we are putting uh another list. Uh also, we had several people in the office today, uh try to tap into a a big entity. You know, I I I don't wanna talk about it yet because uh they haven't committed yet. We're talking about, you know, these, you know, one hundred volunteers. Um so once we get this list together, I'm hoping in the next few days, we should find out something about that, see if it materializes. If it does, then we're gonna set up a um a place where the volunteers can meet, and we're gonna deploy them from there. We're gonna set up a center. So Miss uh Mr. Lee Gavin and I discussed it earlier today. So uh we're working um very hard trying to get. You know, something going with the volunteers. We do have a lot of people, like I said, on the list. We had just probably midday over two hundred. And my Chief of Staff have another five hundred emails in her inbox right now that she's going through. So also, the second question you mentioned, um with a senior citizen. Uh we are, uh they are reaching out, they're calling us uh at the City Hall. We are filling out the forms. We're putting them on the list as well. And we are, they they do watch the W D H T uh T V, so we're putting stuff on that channel as well for them to reach out. And that's how a lot of them are actually reaching out. They're seeing it on cable TV.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Leslie Windlass, thank you for all your activism. Does that answer all your questions?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next up, Madam Clerk.
We have Suzanne Todd.
Suzanne Todd, always active. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, first off, I got two things. One is I feel Councilman Protem. Abolish suggestion of having the council meetings at Crestwood is an excellent idea. Cramming people into that stuffy, nasty. That stuffy nasty council chamber is just plain wrong, and I thought if.
I'd be happy to.
This this had been, uh this had been discussed at the last meeting, and that we weren't supposed to be doing anything until August thirty first. And then I found out that you, that there will be a council meeting in the old chambers. I think this is a slap in the face to the residents. Who like to attend. Secondly, I wanna thank everybody who went out and reacted to this flooding. But I gotta tell you, this old lady is madder than a wet hand. I've been fighting this for fifty six years. Fifty six years, I've heard the same platitudes, the same reactions, the the uh the same excuses. Oh, well, this is a big rain and blah, 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 blah. Fifty six years, only different year, different persons. I may appear to be ungracious, but if you wanna plan, here's the plan. Number one, we gotta get Wayne County to clean out that doggone creek. That's number one plan, and the only way we can do that is to put our taxes that are supposed to go to Wayne County in escrow. They don't get their money, they're gonna have to work for it. This is enough is enough. Fifty six years, poop water, not only going in people's basements. But on their first floors. and uh and and ground floors, this is terrible, whole basement's filling up. I'm tired of it. The plan is get the creek clean. That's the first step. I don't want to hear about uh any other thing else, this has got to be done. We have, we in the South End have been doing this for fifty six years, and we are tired, tired, tired.
Thank you, Susan.
Suzanne, great comments, and I agree with you. Thank you. Next up. Who's next?
We have Bilal.
All right, Bilal Amin, go ahead.
Yes.
Uh, first, I want to thank uh, with all this has been going on, I think City Council for everything that they've been doing. Um, it's great to see uh council members on the floor out there doing work, um, all the council members who are who are very active, answering questions, uh especially, I have to give a shout out to uh my Councilman Mo Badun, who is actually my neighbor, when it started, when the flood started, was going around knocking on doors, checking out people. Um, so, big thanks to that, uh, big thank you to the mayor for uh being out there. Um, a lot of cities I've seen mayors aren't even responding to anything, and and you were out there doing work, and that's great. Uh, loved to see it. Uh, this past weekend made me happy to be a a Dearborn Heights uh uh resident of Dearborn Heights, and I I just wanted to thank you guys, come on and thank everybody for the hard work that they're doing, and that's it.
Thank you, Billy, appreciate it. Next up.
Next up, we have Michael Blackburn.
Michael Blackburn, uh, are you speaking as a resident or as an employee of the city, please?
Well, then I asked him to unmute, and he, oh, no, he hasn't yet. I'll try it one more ti- time.
When you have a meeting.
Oh, there we go.
So Mike, Michael, before you begin, if you don't mind, guys, I just want to make sure, clarify, are you speaking as a resident or as an employee of the city?
I speak as a resident.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we back in February twenty twenty have a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers at the Young Center about the Ecorse Creek flooding, and then they talk about possibly building a retention basin at the old inc- in- incinerator property, and wasn't that cost about two hundred and fifty million dollars? Um, I didn't have, I didn't hear anybody talk about that, I know they were trying to find funding, they said project wouldn't start for five years. Um, I might be a little sketching in details.
I think it was nineteen, in nineteen, if I'm not mistaken.
Nineteen.
At Annapolis High School.
Yeah, was that for school?
Okay, I'm, like I said, I'm I'm trying to go off my my memory, I couldn't, I couldn't remember. Um, was there any, is there any details on that project at all that was discussed back then about that, big sense, uh Councilman Abdalhak did mention something about about that, and I know that there was a me- meetings in the past, and the Army Corps of Engineers said, um, construction wouldn't start for at least five years. Uh, I was wondering if somebody could follow up on that.
Councilor Protem.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Zohair Abdalhak, and then Councilman Robert Constant, go ahead.
Uh, if Robert has some information, he can go ahead of me, please.
Just quickly, everyone, and yeah, we had a meeting at uh Annapolis High School in the South End. Uh, the former mayor and uh officials from uh Wayne County, Sam Jafer, and also our uh Congresswoman Debbie Dingle and Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib talked about the the building of a retention basin at the old incinerator property by the Army Corps of Engineers. And the key is to get uh funding for everyone to write their congressman or woman and senator, and ask for funding of that project. Uh, it's on the list along with a lot of other projects, funding uh from the federal government uh for flood mitigation for that retention basin project, and then, once there's funding available, the um construction can begin. Uh, the need for uh the retention basin for both the Ecorse Creek and the River Rouge Basin was highlighted when the city filed the Chapter Eight petition when Kurt Heisy was the uh Drain Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Councilman Constant, Councilman Abdalhak, go ahead.
Yeah, I I believe the, the cost was around fifty million dollars, not two hundred and fifty for Dearborn Heights only.
Right, but I believe, I I wa- I was at that meeting, Councilman, and I think what Mike, uh, Mr. Mike Blackburn is is commenting on is I think the region as a whole.
Region, the region was two hundred, actually, in sixty million dollars.
Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty.
Our share was around fifty million.
Correct, correct. Uh, next up, we have Nancy Brier, another activist, go ahead Nancy.
I'm not done.
I'm moving.
Oh, I'm sorry, not about Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael wasn't done with you, Nancy just.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, thanks. Um, I also just want to say one last thing, that the um, the city's motto is to save what's future. Unless you're a city employee, then you don't have one, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, uh, next up is Resident Nancy Brier, go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, thank you, David. I want to piggyback on what Michael and Bob and Zuhair have said, that's a great location. The incinerator project at Inkster and Van Born. It settles a whole bunch of problems, we've got Taylor, we've got Romulus, we've got Inkster, we've got us. That's for the cities that are affected, it'd be an ideal location to have a retention center. Plus, it could work along with the Van Born Corridor project. And I just want everybody to know that that is something we should be working on. I also have another thought that, is there any way the seniors could go to any of the centers on Tuesday and Thursday, nine to noon, or one to four, either to get out of the heat, or, because some of them don't have air conditioning, and also to get some of the forms to fill out for these issues that we're having with the flooding. And that's it.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Mayor or Chief of Staff, or our manager Lee Gavin, Emergency Manager, can anybody answer that last question?
Yeah, we, I mean, we we did ask uh for our seniors if they want, you know, were willing to bring the forms to their house, or if they want to go to the Eaton or the Berwin Center. Uh, we'll have somebody over there to assist them in filling out the form.
Okay.
So we, we can coordinate, we can coordinate that actually, and we'll announce it. Uh, we'll have a special time that they can actually come in and we'll have them fill it out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, anybody else that's? I see Robert Constant, I believe he's already spoken.
I just want to mention something in a sentence.
Okay, quick sentence, Robert, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, again, want to thank the mayor's office and everyone for the updates, and I'm not the expert, but remind people that it's, it was a hard rain, if anyone saw the pictures of Southfield Road flooded, it's, uh, some gate wasn't left locked, or some equipment didn't fail, it was just a a bad rain and and uh uh, you know, the the solution is probably going to be fairly long term, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Vince, I know you've already spoken, Vince Dru- Drukowski, did you have another quick comment? I'll give you thirty seconds, just out of fairness, go ahead. Go ahead, Vince.
There you go.
Hey, Mr. Abdal, well, just a quick comment. Uh, previously, the previous administration was uh in contact with Dingle's office and Rashida Tlaib's, but he had, they had stated uh not to call there because he didn't want to disturb them. Well, I think it's time that we start calling them and getting uh a boot in their rear end, to find out where these fundings are. Um, I know uh Mr. Bazie, or Mr. Mayor Bazie, uh, has had some contact, but maybe we need to get them together again and find out a little bit more about what's going on, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vince. Um, I don't see any other ones, I do see Suzanne. Todd, Suzanne, I'll give, I know you've already spoken, but I'll give you an additional thirty, forty seconds, go ahead Suzanne.
What we have to understand, the flooding of the freeways this time was because nineteen pumps along the freeways did not work. It has nothing to do with the flooding that happened in the South End of Dearborn Heights, or has been happening for fifty six years, and is now beginning to happen even more, in the, or is now beginning to happen in the North End. Don't mix up the facts. The freeways are different from what's happening in our city.
Thank you very much Suzanne. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you had your hand raised, you're all set. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I just want to answer Mr. Drukowski's uh comment. Uh, we actually, during during a meeting today with the governor, uh, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib uh did actually mention it to the governor that we need to uh put special emphasis on the Ecorse Creek, she mentioned it several times in the meeting. Just wanted to let you know, she's she's advocating, and she brought it to the governor's attention, and she actually said to flow to the US President, see if we can get us funding for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I do agree with Vince Drukowski, you know what? Um, as a resident, we got to stay active, and it's okay, call them, it's your right. Uh, you know, we're the United States of America, it's one of our rights, so absolutely, Vince, I I do agree with you with that. People continue to call. Was there any other residents?
You know what they say, David?
Yes, go ahead.
The squeaky, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Oil, it's the grease, yep, yep, absolutely. Was there any other residents to add, question or comment? Hearing none?
Council Chair, move uh, we adjourn the meeting.
Support.
Okay, move to adjourn, uh motion by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Zohair Abdalhak. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
We got to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got to take a vote on adjournment.
Got a little excited.
On favor, on favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.
Thank you, Dave.